Okay. Calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District seventy-six. Roll call please. Here.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty or justice for all.
We now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. If you're in our audience and you have a public comment you would like to make, please feel free to just stand up and make that. And it's not look like we have any public comments. So I'm going to move on to presentations because I'm assuming that's what you're all here for.
We are very excited. We have two parts to our presentations tonight and we like to spotlight our students learning and achieving and celebrate them at our board meetings and the board members really appreciate and seeing and hearing student voices. So I am going to turn it over to Mr. Peterson who is going to be spotlighting West Oak Middle School students today in a two-part presentation. Mr. Peterson.
It can be a little difficult. We're getting close to some bedtimes right now, I'm sure for a lot of it. Thank you though for this time and for our ability to highlight our school. These young people here, this is something that was started with Dr. Cunningham, with our principal's advisory council last year. And really what our goal was, was to say increase that student voice and choice and student engagement and above all student ownership in our building as well. So you know, to kind of piggyback off of our principal's advisory council, we wanted to kind of step up our game here a little bit this year because I realized they needed help, you know, first the principal. So what we formed then was our student ambassadors. And they play a huge role, an instrumental role here in what we do and how we do things in our building. And really I just want to highlight these amazing young people because they are amazing. And just so I'm going to turn it over to them and they're going to tell us a little bit about, you know, how they were, how they kind of became part of the student ambassadors, but also what is it about our school as well? This whole idea was spawned from the Association for Illinois Middle School. They did a learning walk in December. And you know, and we basically, these people, you know, they've been tours to our visitors that came in to check out our school. And they also presented on some things as well. They're going to tell you a little bit about that. But walking out of there, the president of the Ames Association was like, I want to see more of these kids. So hey, how about, hey, can we, you guys have a presentation at our sorority summit in March? And really that's what we did last Friday was we went down to Glen Allen. It was Havley Junior High School. I didn't get a count on the number of people there, but it was really standing room only. And these guys stand down and just kind of, they were the showstopper. They were the highlight of, my opinion was the highlight of the conference itself. There's a whole lot where people attended their conference, their presentation, and mine. So without further ado, I'm going to stop talking and I'm going to turn it over to them and to give their presentation. I'll bet they gave it to one person.
Is this like push to speak, talk? Or like, oh, okay. My name is Kelly Castro and this is our presentation that we gave out to the Ames Summit. It's called Student Voice and Choice: A Little School That Is Making a Big Difference. What? Oh. We are West Oak Middle School and we're set up in Mundeline. We feed into Mundeline High School and Stevenson High School. Our superintendent is Dr. Sharma Lewis, who's right here. And then our principal is right over there. We have three hundred and five students. About seventy-five percent is Hispanic, fifteen percent is white, and the rest is miscellaneous. About fifty-two percent of our students are low-income and about thirty-three are English learners.
We were chosen through a form at the beginning of the year. We just filled it out in the All Grade Google Classroom and then we got told if we were chosen. I think a lot of us joined, so our voices were heard. And then some other people said, "Students feel like they have a seat at the table. Students enjoy having someone their own age helping with decisions. We are listened to. We help make what happens happen. I feel like a big part of stuff and that is nice." These pictures, the left is more of like a silly one than the right is just all of us, really.
Student ambassadors, we meet about twice a month. We're kind of messages to Mr. Peterson. We do tours for new students. We have assemblies once a month and we kind of help organize them and choose what we're going to do at the assemblies. We do a lot of decision-making. We do food tasting. We got new hurdles after a lot of requests to do stuff. We changed the dress code and book bags is kind of in the works right now. We also helped during our Ames Learning Walk on December nineteenth. The top picture is an assembly, I believe. I wasn't there, but it was with Trey Baker. Then the one on the bottom is with Senator Lewis.
So about those, is this working? Okay. About those monthly assemblies, we usually focus on having a positive school environment. We also engage students with guest speakers and we also have like spirit challenges which are like fun games that you can, that you play in between talking. And we acknowledge students in the form of positive referrals, students of the month. And we look at our school data, like for example, one of our data at points was how many suspensions we had in comparison to last year. And another one is how we're growing. And we, the student ambassadors usually help by setting up what we're actually going to do in those assemblies. Picture on the left shows that everyone in the entire school is there and the picture on the right is one of our guest speakers, Dr. Sharma Lewis is right there again.
As a referral is an award that's been given from teachers or students. Students can nominate teachers or teachers can nominate students. There's also two hundred per month.
Okay, so the monthly assemblies. So what do the students think about the monthly assemblies? I personally love the assemblies. First, we get a shortened schedule, which is also always amazing. And also I absolutely love the games and I like participating in the games and picking the people and also getting the lollipops at the end, me personally, but you know.
Yeah, basically what Lila said, I feel like people actually look forward to the assemblies because there's games to look forward to and we have guest speakers. And I think everybody just kind of like pays more attention because of the games, so it's kind of a win-win.
We invited some people from other schools and we gave some examples of sports and clubs and told us a little, told them a little more about what we do in our school.
Alright, so trimester challenges. So for example, a trimester challenge is at the end of each trimester, if you make, if you don't get three or more tardies and if you don't have one charge during, which is like five minutes charge during class and no minors or majors, then in the ten, last ten days of school, and you would think that'd be easy, but for some people it's not and that's okay. But, but we really encourage people to, you know, go to that prize at the end of the trimester. And yeah, the first trimester, we had the, what's it called? The moving popcorn. And we had like the Kona ice truck last year.
Yeah. For our second trimester challenge, what we did was we did a doll that we tore apart. It was to represent of what has been done to us. We're, so our task was at the end of it was to tape back that doll. But the meaning of that was scars can't be redone of what has been damaged. Another one is was a shoe. We filled in the shoe of what people didn't know about us. But we want people to know about us. And then at the end of that, what we did was we did locker cleanouts, which was kind of fun because I got to go through all the garbage in my locker. And, yeah.
As a referral is an award that's been given from teachers or students. Students can nominate teachers or teachers can nominate students. There's also two hundred per month.
Okay, so the monthly assemblies. So what do the students think about the monthly assemblies? I personally love the assemblies. First, we get a shortened schedule, which is also always amazing. And also I absolutely love the games and I like participating in the games and picking the people and also getting the lollipops at the end, me personally, but you know.
Yeah, basically what Lila said, I feel like people actually look forward to the assemblies because there's games to look forward to and we have guest speakers. And I think everybody just kind of like pays more attention because of the games, so it's kind of a win-win.
For our Ames Learning Walk, we took the representatives from Ames around on tours of the school and we also gave a different presentation, not this one, to them.
We invited some people from other schools and we gave some examples of sports and clubs and told us a little, told them a little more about what we do in our school.
Alright, so trimester challenges. So for example, a trimester challenge is at the end of each trimester, if you make, if you don't get three or more tardies and if you don't have one charge during, which is like five minutes charge during class and no minors or majors, then in the ten, last ten days of school, and you would think that'd be easy, but for some people it's not and that's okay. But, but we really encourage people to, you know, go to that prize at the end of the trimester. And yeah, the first trimester, we had the, what's it called? The moving popcorn. And we had like the Kona ice truck last year. Yeah.
For our second trimester challenge, what we did was we did a doll that we tore apart. It was to represent of what has been done to us. We're, so our task was at the end of it was to tape back that doll. But the meaning of that was scars can't be redone of what has been damaged. Another one is was a shoe. We filled in the shoe of what people didn't know about us. But we want people to know about us. And then at the end of that, what we did was we did locker cleanouts, which was kind of fun because I got to go through all the garbage in my locker. These are some of our challenges. We, our activities were art, hair spa, and VR. And I did teacher's assistant with Ms. Markowski and fitness room for my pick of toys.
Our PBIS data has gotten better throughout the year. We have currently only had five out-of-school suspensions. Last year we had forty-eight. And in-school suspensions last year, we had sixty and we only have seventeen so far. These are some results from last year's spring test. As you can see, we did really good in our growth. And when we do really good in our tests, we get to pick a special prize to celebrate.
In our school, the grades are great. You can tell people really try to get to the good grades. Also, on our tests, each new one, we all do, everyone does better on each one. And our school is learning faster than average. In our school assemblies, we have something called Honorable Recognition. And we give those to students that have As and Bs. And from getting those, you get a nice breakfast from our principal.
Social emotional learning is something that we do every Monday each week. We spend about five minutes on it and we look through a slideshow or watch a video related to our topic of the week. Some of the things that we do are about communicating appropriately, social media awareness, hygiene, celebrating uniqueness, goal-setting, self-management, self-care, which is the lesson we're currently in, and making responsible decisions and healthy habits. A third to eighth grade SEL survey shows that a large majority of our school feels like they have friends at school that care about them. They feel physically safe. Their teachers want them to do well and that they have at least one trusted adult at school that they can talk to when they need help.
At least eighty percent of our school is involved in at least one sport, club, or activity. The more students engage, the better because we like that the students are getting to know each other outside of their own grades. A couple of clubs that we have are WeGroup, Catalyst, MASK, Black Student Union, Yearbook Club, Student Broadcast Club, and Art Club. Our sports are soccer for boys and girls, boys and girls volleyball, boys and girls basketball, cross-country, track, wrestling, cheerleading, and basketball.
With the topic of student engagement, the photo to the left is our undefeated boys soccer team going to a championship game. And the photo to the right is them after winning the championship game. These are also some of our after-school activities that we can do, like girls volleyball, girls cheerleading, and caramel math competition, which our school got first place.
Sorry. So our gym teacher and our art teacher worked together to make posters and they put them up on all of the people who participate in sports teams. So cross-country, soccer, basketball, they all got these posters when they made the playoffs. For graduation, we don't only let like staff talk to, about, at graduation, we also let other students make speeches. So we had a lot of eighth graders talk. And some students are engaged in food pantries or feed starving children. On the top right is a teacher helping a student pick up their papers. And bottom right, and the bottom right picture is of student of the month. Pretty cool. What?
The picture on the left is about broadcast, interviewing a basketball player before the game. And in the top right, it's about summer singers. And summer singers is about when you go to school early and you sing slash dance. Club courses makes everyone feel welcome and they accept everyone the way they are.
On the left, we have Catalyst's hot chocolate giveaway. You get a hot chocolate packet when you get a question right from the drug prevention spinner. On the right is Sewing Club. This is Ms. Ray teaching us how to make little birds.
The National Forum Schools to Watch nominated us as a national school to watch. And this picture shows all of us in shirts that we were given, taking one big picture of the entire school showing that we wouldn't be here without the staff and the students. This last picture shows teachers with their Schools to Watch trophy showing again that it's not just the teachers, but also the students that make this school as powerful as it is.
Just for everybody here in our board, how do you guys, how do you guys feel about West Oak Middle School?
Yeah, I get it organized. So we go from left to right. We don't just like start saying stuff. So I feel like West Oak Middle School means a lot, a lot to a lot of students. Every, every single staff member means a lot to the students because it's not just them teaching. It's also, it's not just teaching actual academic lessons. It's teaching life. The staff teaches life lessons as well. It means a lot to a lot of people.
Just like Kelly said, I feel like the teachers really do care about their students. They try to get to know them better and same with students. Do you guys kind of like, how do I say it? Like you just get to know each other better and you can like really tell that teachers do care about their students.
I really just feel like we have a pretty decent academic school.
Okay, so since I'm just such a special student, I love this school so much and also I'm having a bake-off with my art teacher, Ms. Owen. She's right back there. Yeah. Anyway, it's going to be like really, really fun and like student engagement, it doesn't get any better than that because like, like when you guys were in school, like how many people, how many teachers offered to, you know, have a bake-off with you? I bet zero.
I feel West Oak is a very inclusive and accepting school and the people here are very friendly. And I think the teachers and social workers, they just like, they want us to learn instead of just being the teachers.
What I think about West Oak Middle School is that's a lot more better than my old school because they actually take care of problems. The teachers don't just chew you away and go, just go say, deal with your own problems. It's not my problem. Every single principal here is well-caring and actually cares about their students of their opinion. So yeah.
What I like about West Oak is that there's always that one teacher that you can go to talk to.
I feel like West Oak Middle School is very equal to all their students. And if they have any suggestions, they can always come to any office staff and give them the suggestion. And most of the time, we do what our students ask us to do.
I really like West Oak because the teachers really try and connect with the students and try to get to know like their everyday lives and like what's, like what's going on in their lives.
I feel that everyone likes going to West Oak Middle School and they feel supported and they have someone to talk to.
I like West Oak Middle School because you don't have to go searching for the people that you like connect with because it's such a small school and you just immediately find the people instead of having to go searching through this whole thousand people in middle school.
I really like West Oak Middle School because it's just a very warm and accepting place, almost like a home away from home. I've had multiple occasions where I've been upset or overwhelmed about things and Ms. Marquez, our school nurse, allows me to just sit in her office until I calm down a bit. And all the teachers, they're kind of like family to me at this point with how long I've had them.
So that is our presentation, everybody. Does the board have any questions for our students? I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you all so much for taking your time. I know there's other things you could be doing. And having an opportunity to share with us what your teachers and your administrators and each other mean to you is really fantastic. And I know that if I was sitting at the Ames Conference, I would have been extremely impressed with everything you presented tonight. So I think you should definitely feel really good about what you're doing to help the vision and the mission of West Oak Middle School. So thank you so much for coming and for sharing. I just wanted to thank you.
You're welcome.
I wanted to add that I appreciate hearing the student perspective because we often just hear teacher perspective, administrator perspective. So all of you, thank you for your time and enthusiasm. You all did a really great job.
I agree with everything that you all said, Mrs. Bayless and Mr. Becker. I was at the Ames Conference on Friday and I agree with what Mr. Peterson said. It was standing room only and just a few more people were at their presentation than yours, Mr. Peterson's. Don't feel too bad. But they did, they did an outstanding job. They represented District seventy-six and West Oak Middle School, each other and our staff so well in our community. I was really, really proud of them. I'm also really proud of you right now for having the courage to speak to the audience on a microphone. We as adults practice a lot and you guys did it on your first time and you were absolutely wonderful and perfect, so great job. But the question I have, and I was really impressed because somebody in the audience on Friday asked it and Mrs. Pacararo reminded me of it. But your data of the out-of-school suspensions and your in-school suspensions has gone down a lot. I believe the number was like forty-four to five of out-of-school suspension and like sixty-some to like fifteen or sixteen or seventeen, I can't remember, but in the teens for in-schools. Can someone just respond to me and the audience as to why they think that data went down so much from last year to this year?
I feel like our school suspensions have gone down because our student assemblies teach the students a lot and they show how to be more kind and look more into their future.
Sometimes people really want attention, so they act out, but I feel like now the teachers like actually realize, like the kids realize that the teachers have, like, they have somebody to talk to, whether it's in school or outside of school. Like it's not just like, oh, you're on your own. So if you want attention, you can just act out and then like, oh, everybody's going to pay attention to you. But like, you can just talk your feelings out instead of show people like what.
One more. I think another reason that it's gone down so much is last year, people were still like coming back from COVID. I believe it was last year when masks became optional. And it was just all a big change to come from online to partially in-person, back to completely all-in-person. And I think people just weren't quite used to it, but I think now people have just grown more like adapted to come back to the school environment, especially because teachers make it really easy and nice to like give students like easy opportunities to do well and behave well.
Thank you.
But um, this, it just goes to show that the quality of kids that we have in our school and uh, these are the leaders of some of those, and some of the great kids that we have. I hope you guys have learned something about yourselves and uh, I know, I know I've learned from you guys as well. And uh, hey, it's only Mark, we, we're not done yet, so uh, I just want to say thank you for myself here, uh, for all that you guys have done for, for our school and.
We have one more presentation as part of the West Oak Middle School learning update. So I'm gonna ask the ambassadors to stay um, seated and invite Mrs. Salzman to come up and introduce her team.
I don't know how I'm going to follow you guys. Um, I have to first say awesome job, uh, speaking and listening, nice job everyone, something we're focusing on. Um, okay, I'll wait just a second.
So while we're waiting, Mrs. Salzman, would you introduce yourself and a little bit about your program and maybe the project before the students present?
All right, I'm Mrs. Salzman. Um, I teach sixth through eighth grade communication arts, which is a writing, speaking, listening, and sometimes grammar, you know, all your favorite activity. Um, this year, uh, my eighth graders got to do some fun and exciting things with writing. Uh, but we wanted to move away from writing for a little bit because one of the struggles a lot of our students have is speaking. And these guys, I, I'm impressed. Uh, you have your, some big shoes to fill, so very impressive. All right, um, my um, project this year for the eighth graders was called the Humans of West Oak. Um, it was a project based around a um, a gentleman named Br- Brandon Stanton, who is, runs a website called Humans of New York. And this was all about him going out, taking pictures of ten thousand people in New York, but it ended up becoming much bigger where people he was photographing started telling him their stories. And so I thought, what an amazing idea for my eighth graders to get out there and start telling other people's stories. So their job was to go out and interview three people. It had to be one person from the school building, one person in their home life, and then they got to choose whomever they wanted to interview. Um, I always do a reflection at the end of the unit. And these four uh, had the most to say about the project. So I'm gonna introduce them and let them kind of give a little spiel about who they interviewed and uh, what they spoke about. This is Shane.
So I interviewed my mom, my friend Celeste, and my science teacher, Ms. Ms. Carmichael. Something I learned from this um, project is that everyone has their own story and there are always two sides to that story. One thing, one of the things I learned, I enjoyed about this project was talking to teachers and seeing different sides to them. And that we get to next, that we get to connect with them.
Hey, so I interviewed my so, my old social studies teacher, Mr. Door, our lunch lady, Ms. Vetter, and my friend Alan. And one thing I learned from this project is everyone in this school has so many amazing stories. And it helped me learn more about everyone here. Um, one thing that Salzman can do to improve this project is to allow us more practice interviews because it can help us be even better prepared for interviewing and getting interviewed.
Um, I interviewed my sister, uh, my friend Sophia and, and my science teacher, Ms. Carmichael. One thing I learned from this project is that not everyone has the same experience in life. Something I would do differently if I had the chance to would be to ask more follow-up questions because when interviewing, I didn't really have the chance to ask as many as I could.
I interviewed my dad, Samantha G., and Dr. Baron. One thing I enjoyed about this unit was getting to hear from people you wouldn't normally because it forces to get out of our comfort, comfort zone. I learned a lot of new things about people and how everyone has a different way of looking at things.
All right, so based on the success of this unit, and would you guys want to do this unit again if you had the chance? Yeah, Kelly? Archer? Would you want to do it again? Yeah, you wouldn't interview me that time though, right? All right, so based on the success of the unit, I, we're gonna improve upon it every year. Um, the students, from what I, the feedback I received was that they had a great time getting out of the classroom and speaking to different people. And as well as telling their own stories because a lot of them were interviewed as well. Um, and in addition, Mrs. Seon um, had heard about the project and thought, how can we come together and do a collaboration? And so she is looking at, for the eighth graders, doing their grid drawings. Um, allowing the students to improve their accuracy, learning how to draw realistic facial features. Um, and they want to, she wants them to be able to choose from the portraits of the people that inspired them for this project. So out of the three, they get to choose one. So I'm kind of excited because it'll be something that we'll be able to start next year right off the bat, so. Um, I had a great time with this project. My seventh graders that have heard about it are real excited for next year. So I can't wait to see who they're gonna go out and interview. Um, and don't be surprised if they come asking you guys, so. Um, I want to thank you guys for being brave to come up and speak. This is not easy. Um, and that's all I have, so, thank you.
And that concludes our presentations for this evening. Thank you all for coming tonight. Again, for your courage, your bravery, your confidence and how proud you are. We are proud of you too. So thank you again for coming. And um, I know it's, it's getting close to bedtime, so you probably want to go home and study for your tests and projects tomorrow. So parents that brought them, thank you so much for coming and supporting your students as well as our district and our community. And if you would like to leave, you are welcome to, or you are welcome to stay. We have a really exciting business meeting planned after, so you can stay too. Thank you.
Thank you.
D L T, would you like to sit in the stools?
Good luck.
But there's um, the chair's right there if you guys want to.
Okay, so um, like Dr. Sharmel Lewis mentioned, we will now move on to our business agenda. It's going to be very difficult to tap all those presentations. Um, you know, it's always, I think, amazing for us to see the students present and to hear from them. It was fantastic at the last board meeting to hear the, the teachers present too. And I really hope the teachers get a chance to see what the kids said about them tonight because I thought that was just so impressive and outstanding. So um, everyone should be really proud of all the work that the kids and the teachers have done.
Thank you, Mrs. Hill. And you know what? I know a couple of people had asked because they couldn't be here tonight, so we'll make sure that Mr. Hanson puts it out for the whole staff. A link tomorrow so they can actually see it.
Yeah, I was, I mean, I think it was outstanding to hear that feedback from the kids. Um, okay, so moving on to the business agenda. And we have one item for action and we have one item for review. So the omnibus vote agenda is up for review this evening. And we will vote on that at our next meeting. Um, the item that's up for action this evening is personnel. Um, be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have two new hires, we have one resignation, and we have one internal transfer. May I have a motion to approve, please? Congratulations, Sammy, and welcome back. Welcome back. We were, I mean, I, we were all very sad to lose Daisy, but we are all so thrilled to have you back with the family. So welcome back, it's great to see you. Congratulations.
Yes, welcome back, Sammy. And I know Mr. Hanson would like to take a picture of you, so whenever, if you want to have a quick minute after the meeting. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, so that, um, that concludes the business agendas. That was relatively fast this evening. Um, freedom of information requests, we've had one and that's been answered. Um, or you know what? I'm sorry, I skipped board discussion. But I don't think we have any items for board discussion this evening because they're under others. Okay. Um, so freedom of information request, we had one that was fulfilled. Moving on to notices and communications, um, the seat all meeting summary we have. Um, I know that uh, Mr. Becker had indicated he attended the meeting for us, so thank you very much for doing that. Um, I don't know if you wanted to make any comments. We do have the attachment of the summary of the last board meeting. But um, it sounded like it was a really positive experience.
It was um, really, really well attended in this really large board meeting, our boardroom. The presentation that they gave was about forty-five minutes of slides and testimony and they were just, everyone was crying and everyone was happy and elated. And I didn't even recognize the pictures of um, West, uh, no, um, Fairhaven. They were showing pictures of current um, classrooms and student rooms. It just looks great and it was just a really great feeling and a great vibe. And there, everyone was just very grateful, so I'm really excited about that.
Fantastic. Um, okay, then moving on, we also have the D Seventy-Six highlights. I don't know if there was anything you want to point out there.
The only thing that's new, um, that we added, um, we wanted to share with you, our summer learning program because we've begun to advertise. It's been a little over a month and we are um, a little bit over a hundred students, so we're excited about that. We're gonna kind of keep it going for the next couple of weeks and hoping to get a few more students that are out there um, into, enrolled in our summer learning program. You saw the February moment of the month, um, the Diamond Edge Newsletter. I know some of you receive, you, all of you received that, but we just wanted to share with you. That went out. And then something new that, um, because we've definitely promoted within the district leadership team and also among our staff is we've got so many positive things going on here and how well the staff are working together on their initiatives and programs. Not only with, you know, academics, but also the social emotional piece and our culture and climate piece that we're out sharing. You know, our experiences with um, our communities, whether that be locally, statewide or nationally. And I know um, Mrs. Hill and I presented a few weeks ago at a webinar for I A S B on the superintendent evaluation and then the process and the relationship that goes into building that. Um, so, you know, we, we do that at a state level, but I just wanted you to see that Mr. Hanson presented at the technology conference last month. And then last Friday, Mr. Peterson presented at the Ames Exploratory Conference as well as with our student ambassadors that you saw tonight. And Mr. Preble presented at the King of the City Day last Friday as well on culture and climate. And then I was invited to, because of our social media presence, um, at our A A S A, which is the American Association of School Administrators National Conference. Um, sit in on a panel on social media and, in the lounge, and it's kind of share what we do, the do's and don'ts, and how do we promote and support social media presence in a positive way in our district. So just, we just wanted you to see that.
Fantastic.
And that is all the highlights for this one.
It's awesome to always have so many things to highlight.
I know it is.
Um, okay, so moving on, we now have public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. We've lost most of our audience. It looks like there are no further public comments. Great. Um, and then moving on to others, and I think that there are a couple attachments for others tonight.
So as I shared um, with you all earlier today, um, and you know, I know Mrs. Sullivan had requested putting these items on the agenda to discuss how to share, um, how and if to share the information about the District One Twenty referendum. So I put all the attachments um, requested into the agenda just to open it up for, um, for discussion and direction on moving forward.
Um, so I'll kind of give a little spiel about um, why I think it's important that we do share this information out. Um, I don't know the exact, you know, percentage, but most of our students will attend Mundaline High School. And um, you know, there's not a lot of information out there right now about um, this upcoming referendum. It's uh, April fourth. Um, and so I just think it's important um, that we make sure that the parents are aware that this is coming up, that we provide that information for them. I think the, you know, whether this um, referendum passes or not is gonna greatly impact most of the students that attend our school. Um, so I think it's just, um, you know, I, I think we have an ethical obligation to make sure that the parents are aware of this and that their, their voice can, their votes can make a difference um, on this. Oh, just to add, um, some of the other schools, um, theater schools, uh, District Seventy-Five and District Seventy-Nine have also shared information. I think they have bulletin boards at their schools and they've shared out uh, mass communication uh, through email as well. In case, or were you, go ahead. No, I was just gonna say, in case anyone missed it, Dr. Myers is coming from One Twenty to speak at the next board meeting. Um, so I think we can definitely make sure that that's included in kind of our communication app to parents so that they know that there is going to be discussion of um, the referendum from him that evening. And if they want to, you know, attend or watch later, they'll be able to access that information. Um, I was just gonna say, I think that it looks like for the most part legally, we're constrained to provide just factual information. And we just have to figure out what's the best way to do that to make sure everything we're giving out is factual and correct and that we're not kind of taking a side um, as board members or as the district or as the administrators. Um, it looks like, I mean, I think, I'm not sure how Seventy-Five, if they have different restraints or constrictions because they share administrators with One Twenty and because, you know, there's overlap there. Um, so I don't know if, if any of that is different than what would apply to us. Um, I, I would think that, you know, we could look at, you know, One Twenty seems to have put together a pretty robust website and they've had videos and they've had information like that. I would think that we could easily refer um, people with questions to that information. But I don't know how we want to, I don't know that we want to put out something from our districts, like as opposed to just sharing the factual information that One Twenty has given us. So do you mean you don't think we should take a proactive role in making sure that this information gets to the parents? Or do you mean that we don't, you're, you want to be more careful about how we word our communication to the parents or what is it that you're? I feel like that we have, we have to, any communication that we give out about this, whether it's allowing, you know, anyone to speak at board meeting or allowing um, people to come speak to the staff or to parents, needs to be essentially just factually based and not have a position. Sure. Um, I know all of us are community members and depending on where you live and if you fall within that district, like individually, you certainly can have, you know, your. you know, your own opinion and your own voice and advocate for that. Um, I'm just trying to stay like within the guidelines of like legally what we're allowed to do.
Could we just, not promote, I guess, but, uh, to push out the website that Mundaline has produced? Like, if you're interested in information about the referendum, just, but keep pushing that out.
What I would like to know is whether or not that's seen as endorsing, like legally. That's what I would like to ask.
Well, I mean, I think.
As opposed to answering a question. Like, if someone asks, where would I find this information, you responded. I just want to know what's the difference between that and then actually pushing out information.
So on that frequently asked, um, questions, um, that Babina shared earlier, it says, may the district spend money to publicize a referendum? And even under that, it said yes, provided that di- district funds are not used to advocate for or against the referendum. So, I mean, it seems like there is some interpretation there. But absolutely, it sounds like we have, um, the, the legal authority to send out this information to the parents.
Yeah, I'm just asking how it's interpreted, like.
Would it be considered taking a side if we decide, if you want information about the referendum? And just pushing that out?
I can't imagine that it would be. Because we're just saying, here is the information or vacation on that, just. I mean, I, I think it's pretty clear on this that it says that we can send out that information.
That's factual, yeah.
Right, right, so that would be.
There's a referendum upcoming.
Yeah, you just can't say go forward.
Right.
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 We could say that D 120 has a website.
Right. Well, and they, and they have the same.
If, if it's from District 120, it's going to have to follow the same.
Same, yeah, exactly.
What we, what we probably couldn't do is if a private citizen has a website or, and we could not communicate, it would probably be crossing, approaching, if not crossing the line, say, you know, go to Mr. Jones's website that promotes this.
Right.
I, I think, I mean, our experience from our referendum shows that there's a lot of value in making people aware.
Yes.
Of it. And, uh, and, and, and I think that us playing any role that we can to help make people aware of it is probably a positive. Well, yeah. The, the, and to, i- if you have a side to win the referendum, yes. But, um, but I, I, but we have, we communicate with families with children in the district.
Yeah.
So I think though, I think it should be fine for us to, um, help make people in the district with kids in the school aware of the referendum.
Right.
I do think a great question for Dr. Meyer would be, what, you know, how would you like feeder districts to play a role in this? You know, do they want us to direct people to the, to the website or, or?
It's, it's my understanding that that is what they, um, are hoping to get. It's just, you know, more, um, eyes on, you know, their, their information that they're providing. So we don't have to interpret it, we don't have to do anything like that. We just say, there's a referendum coming up, we just want to make you aware of it. Um, you know, I don't know if you guys have gotten questions about it. I've gotten a lot of questions about it. Um, and so, you know, and, and I don't want to have to provide information as a board member. I, I'd rather say, you know what? We have communication that's coming out that will direct you to be able to find that information.
I was actually just going to say that, that really just being the, the pass-through so that the questions can be asked to the people that have the answers and can, um, give them the, the clarification that they may need seems to be the, the, both dealing with, you know, ethics legally and also just this referendum, though it impacts many of our families, is not a District 76 referendum. And therefore, we are not the people to be answering those questions because we don't, we are not part of that, but just sending information so somebody can do the reading and be, um, educated and then make a decision, their own decision based on that seems reasonable.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think, it sounds like that's the board's consensus. I think the point I was trying to make was it would be helpful just to, and we can definitely ask Dr. Myers for this, just to get the list of the, you know, where's the website that they would like us to include? Kind of just the basic factual information so that it's not us even having to necessarily write anything. So it's just us following, you know, exactly the facts that they want to put out there to make sure everything that we're putting out is just accurate.
Could we use the same one, which is District 75?
Yeah, they, I included an email that, that 75 had sent out that kind of gives the, uh, a link to their, kind of gives the why behind why they want to have this referendum, what the school, um, is seeing as, as what needs to be addressed with this, um, referendum money. And, um, what else does it say?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I would just say that in knowing how our families read communication, that maybe we would just want to put some bullets together and then give the opportunity to read additional information if they want, just so that the date of the referendum is clearly spelled out, you know, that kind of information so that they can see that. I mean, I think this letter is pretty brief, but I just don't know that people read that much text.
The third attachment is the flyer. I don't know if you've seen that.
Right, I mean, it's a, I think it's an effective flyer. And, I mean, the, the reality is that consolidated election is so easy to miss.
Right.
I- if you're not looking for it. So I think awareness, awareness is, uh, among families who send kids here is, is huge.
Yeah, and I think the flyer would be easy to share out.
Right, and to, I think tomorrow night, they have another town hall meeting. So it would be great if we could get it out, you know? I mean, as soon as, the earlier the better, because then people have an opportunity to make some of these, um, meetings that they might not get an opportunity to later on when we're getting closer to spring break. So.
So I'm hearing, talk to Dr. Myers, get a consistent statement and then put it out, maybe with this fact sheet and direction to the website.
Yeah, I think, and then if, like, I would, I mean, personally, but I, but chime in if you guys have different opinions. I think we would just want to list out the key dates, like, you know, if you're interested in learning more about the referendum, here's the dates for their town halls, here's the date of the actual election, and, and, you know, put the links in there so that people have that, you know, readily available.
Yeah.
I think it's just in the wording. It's, the wording is just neutral. It's just factual base, it's, I mean, it's a fact coming up. There's a reference in the form. I don't think there needs to be a disclaimer that almost, it's like, it then creates more than.
Yeah, I mean, exactly. I think, I mean, I understand your point though, but I think that as long as we just present it actually, um, it's, it wouldn't be necessary to include a disclaimer. And I'd be concerned that by putting the disclaimer, it might lead people to, to interpret our opinion one way or another. So, so yeah, I think, I think board direction is if we could just get the relevant links and dates from Dr. Meyer and put, you know, that in an email and attach the, the fact sheet, which I think is really nicely done and kind of leaves everything out, um, then that should be, you know, helpful. And then we can see if, if that's something that we want to send out, you know, like what the cadence of that is, whether we send it out, you know, a reminder again about the election, um, because obviously it's a school board election too, so we'd like people to vote anyway. Um, but then, you know, so that it coincides with the town hall too.
The dates are in this letter, so I'll, maybe I'll draft something. It'd be easier if I just draft up, we have an attached referendum sheet, a huge, a huge town hall meeting for our high school.
Okay, I see it.
I can just take that and then maybe just refer them to the, the fact sheet and send it to Kevin and see if that would be, that might be easier than having him share something with me.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. And then I also have, um, some informational flyers that just have a QR code that just takes you directly to the, um, the website, the D 120 website. Um, so if, maybe, um, maybe I can grab one of those, I think they're in my car. Um, you know, if, as long as it's all just informational stuff on it, uh, maybe we can post that a- at the school, maybe in the office or something like that. So if parents are coming in, they could do a quick QR, you know?
You can even put it in the letter. You know, maybe see it on their phone or something, have that QR code in the letter and the email.
Okay. So I think there's direction there. Um, did, did anyone have any other others? Okay, then we are going to adjourn into executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or lea- or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Uh, may I have a motion to approve, please? Or motion to adjourn to executive session, sorry.
Move, a second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.